All right, looks like pretty much everybody is here. Okay. Commodore Ramato, I am ready when you are, sir. All right. During this session, there will be comments from the Chief Director of the Auxiliary, Vice National Commodore. There will be also reports from the Deputy National Commodores and the President of the National Association of Commodores. Now we will hear the reports of the National Executive Committee, and I'll introduce each speaker as they come up. First up, we have our Chief Director, Captain Brent Schmattke.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Brent Schmattke, just reporting in day number three from the Pacific Northwest. I'm very happy to be here. Thanks for having me. Just a little bit about myself. I've been a pilot pretty much my entire career. So I was graduated college back in 97 and was an elementary school teacher for five years, and then decided, hey, I'm going to give this military thing a try and went to the recruiting station and off to OCS I went. And then did a tour at headquarters for maybe a year and a half and then off to flight school, did a tour out in Port Angeles, Traverse City, down to Mobile, back to Port Angeles, back to DC, and then again back to Port Angeles. And now I'm here. So 23 years later, I'm very thankful to be here as the Chief Director of the Auxiliary. Lots of good folks out here in the room. I see a lot of familiar faces on the active duty side. Just a couple of stories from my days as an active duty pilot at air stations. We've always had open arms from all of the auxiliaryists that have been willing to volunteer their time. My time in Traverse City, I went on a couple of air aux patrols. And then down in Mobile, we've had the air aux provide cover so that we could do rescue swimmer operations and boat hoisting. So I'm very thankful for everything that you've done. And then just one other quick story is when I was the CO out in Port Angeles, we've had a couple of volunteers in the auxiliary come out and do ID cards, stand the front gate, and actually do some painting around the base. So I'm very, very appreciative of all the volunteer efforts that you have shown over the many, many years. And so I'd like to thank Gus and Mary for being great hosts in the, I guess, three days that I've been here. And I'm looking forward to learning everything about the Coast Guard Auxiliary. So thank you very much.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and apologize. Skipped through a little bit of things on that. My apologies. Before we even get to that wonderful introduction, I'm going to do a roll call, make sure everybody is where they're supposed to be, and give you a comment about the standing rules. This is a semi-official meeting required by the standing rules. No actions or votes are going to be taking place today. You all received your packet at your seats with the agenda for today and the recommendations. So you have that. You'll hear me mention this later on, but make sure you bring those back. Those are yours to keep for this week, but bring them back for Friday and Saturday when we do that. So, official roll call. National Commodore Gus Ramato.
Here.
Vice National Commodore Mary Kirkwood.
Here.
Immediate Past National Commodore Alex Molesky.
I have one chance.
Chief Director of the Auxiliary Captain Brent Schmattke. Deputy National Commodore Atlantic Area East and Mission Support Alan Fred. Deputy National Commodore Atlantic Area West and Operations Patrick Ferry.
Here.
Deputy National Commodore Pacific Area Recreational Boating Safety Tiny Singler. Deputy National Commodore Information Technology and Planning Linda Merriman.
Here.
District Chief of Staff First Northern Glenn Gaetan. District Commodore First Southern Mike West. District Commodore Fifth Northern Kurt Sarek. District Commodore Fifth Southern John Krogman. District Commodore Seventh District John Holmes. District Commodore Eight Coastal Region Peter Schmarter. District Commodore Eight Eastern Chris Whitaker. District Commodore Eight Western Brock Stevens. District Commodore Nine Central Patricia Matrowski. District Commodore Nine Eastern Richard Evans. District Commodore Nine Western Sunny Thatch. District Eleven Northern Curtis Hahn. District Commodore Eleven Southern Michael Borzov. District Chief of Staff Thirteenth District Greg Hartman. District Commodore Fourteenth District Michael Kerrig. District Commodore Seventeenth District Marion Parrish. And the President of National Associate of Commodores Robert Schaefer. Wonderful. Couple of safety features I want to mention before we get going on everything. You have exits on both sides of the buildings and at the back. Outside in the pool area is, it's no covers, so you don't have to worry about covers while you're here unless you go out. The main front door. An AED, if anybody knows what that is, they have that located at the main hotel lobby, at the desk, front desk there. And there's safety first aid kits around if you need anything. And we'll have a break here halfway through this, but if you need to get out for any reason, please feel free. All right, back on track. Thank you for your patience. All right, up next, we have our VNACO Mary Kirkwood.
Well, good morning. Oops. Good morning, everybody. And good morning to those who are watching us via YouTube. Appreciate your joining us this morning. I know on the West Coast it's quite early, three hours difference. And even further, if you're out in the Guam area, but again, welcome to our first official meeting, our semi-official meeting of NACON 2024. I want to acknowledge the work of our national staff. Our national staff, we could not do what we do without the national staff who put together our programs and keep us in tune with the latest news and what's going on in boating safety and going and in legal and all of the different areas. So thank you to our national staff. Throughout this next few days, we'll be doing quite a few awards. And it's just amazing to hear all the great things that they have done over the last, the last couple of years. Update on the 20 to 2024 National Strategic Plan. This is the work of the national directorates, primarily doing a lot of work to do the milestones and succeed in the goals. We are currently 70% successful in all the goal completion. However, 26% of those are ongoing. So they're not completed, but they continue to keep going. So some of them won't really be completed. They're just intended to be ongoing. So we have 26 still in process and ongoing. And there's still two and a half months left. So some of the other milestones that haven't been completed still will be completed, I'm sure, by the end of October 31st. I have, I have a couple of different program areas that report directly to me. The first one, Safety Coordinator Commodore Bob Schaefer, who's here with us this week. He's got a District Safety Specialist Council. These are safety specialists from each, each district. I know that not every district is represented. So District Commodores, if you would please find a safety specialist in your, in your area and get them in touch with Bob Schaefer because he's passing on some good information there. And you'll hear at the beginning of each of our meetings this week, we will be doing a safety briefing or safety minute. And I encourage you to do that at all of your meetings. We really need to heighten the awareness of safety amongst our members. We do have mishaps. It could be something as, as simple as tripping over cord at a flotilla meeting, or it could be a boating mishap. But we do have mishaps. And the more that we talk about safety, the more safety we become. So thank you, thank you Commodore Schaefer for the work you're doing there. Diversity is another one. Commodore Tracy Schultz, who had to leave us this morning. He's actually running in the World Games for track and field. He's on his way to Sweden. So be cheering him on over the next couple of days as he competes. He's quite the runner. I don't want to give too much because the, these folks will be reporting out more at OPCOM tomorrow, but I do want to just give a brief. This is the first year we had, we have the highest number of units that have succeeded in submitting applications and receiving the NACO three-star war for diversity. So 56% of our units across the country have succeeded and been successful in this. This is awesome. This is absolutely awesome. And it just, it just reinforces that we continue to work towards being a more inclusive organization, which is the key to the future. Without inclusion of everybody, we will not be successful in this organization. So again, the highest ever. We had three districts that were able to achieve 100% of all their units, and that's District 11 South, D11 South, D14 out in Hawaii and that area, and D17 up in Alaska. So really hats off to them. And then we had a close one, D7, which is, I think, our hugest, our biggest district, had 96%. Sounds like they were only missing a couple of units that weren't, that did not apply. So again, thank you, thank you to Tracy and his team for doing such a great job. Another area that reports directly to me is finance. And Commodore David Barker is our, is our leader there. I want to shout out the financial dashboards that he put in place in the last year. He works closely with the D NACOs, A NACOs, and the directors on their budgets. And it's, I think it's given us more accountability and a little bit more transparency as our directors can see where their money is going and how much they've spent, et cetera. So that's great. He is adding additional finance staff to his aux association to process travel claims faster. And so all of our travel claims for those who are under association orders this week should be processed within about two weeks. He says one, I'm giving him two. But he's got people in place, trained and ready to go with this. So that's, that's huge. That's a huge improvement for us. And I know many of you, I had, had talked at one of the meetings yesterday that we were trying to do a one hotel bill, and that's not going to work. I talked to David yesterday, and apparently if we do one hotel bill for all those that are under association orders, we then have to pay sales tax. And that's just a huge amount. So we're not going to do that. So you'll need to put it on your card, but hopefully get reimbursed before you get that credit card statement. We had a very unfortunate change in our legal department. As many of you know, Commodore Doug Cream passed away about three weeks ago. He is, this is a huge loss for our organization, for the legal department, and for many of us personally. He was, he was our chief counsel for 10 years. He was somebody we could easily turn to for any, any issue. He gave us counsel whenever we needed, late night calls, whatever, questions. He knew the aux manual better than all of us put together. And he is, this is a significant loss. And so our thoughts are with him this week as we're here. We have now appointed Bruce Kelton, who many of you know, he was the deputy. And so you'll notice today, he's wearing one star. He is our new A NACO. He was appointed right after the passing of Doug. Friday, we will be electing new national executive team. The term begins November 1st. So we will have a couple of months to pull ourselves together and get our plans in place. The strategic plan for 2024 to 2030 has been drafted. It is in the hands of the A NACOs and the directors right now. So they can start putting in their milestones and putting their plans in place in terms of how to achieve those goals. It is, I think, going to be a stretch, but we need to. And hopefully we'll be innovative in the way we approach things so that our organization will succeed. And again, I want to shout out to all our YouTube people out there for, for joining us this morning. And I hope to see all of you this week. And hopefully this will be a COVID-free week. I'm doing everything I can personally. We have, as you will notice, a lot of hand sanitizer around. We got some in the back. Stick it in your pocket as you're traveling, please. I know we're shaking hands and hugging, but try and keep that to a minimum and use your hand sanitizer afterwards. Okay? If you're feeling ill, please take a COVID test. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commodore Kirkwood. I will now call up D NACO Atlantic East and Mission Support Alan Fred.
Kelly, thank you and good morning, everyone. Before I begin my remarks, I would like to give a shout out to the Amana Freezer Company, who is sponsoring this session here this morning. We hope that it's cold enough for everyone. And please support your local freezer dealer. On behalf of the 12,000 members of LANT East, I'm pleased this morning to share with you some of the highlights of activities in the five districts that comprise LANT East. But before I do that, I would like very, very much to give a shout out to all five districts in LANT East because all five of our districts are showing a net increase in members for this year. In LANT East, we have over 320 net new members. I'm balancing out the ones that leave and the ones that new. So for everyone who had a part in that, thank you very, very much. Recruiting and retention is important to the success of our organization. And again, thank you to everyone who's had a, a part in that. I'm going to take just a little different approach in my remarks this morning. I'm going to focus on four areas: member training, member engagement, Coast Guard support, and youth programs. Beginning with member training, yeah, I'm pleased to report that all five of our districts have had a D train or have a D train scheduled. Why is that important? These are in person. You know, we're back to doing the kinds of things that we used to do prior to what we all, particularly Mary, has come to love COVID-19. And two of the districts are actually having a second D train this year. So it's a great, great opportunity for our members to get together, to fellowship, to have training programs. So, you know, thank you for those who put D trains together. It's not an easy task, but we all, you know, all five are having them. And, you know, thank you very much for that. Throughout LANT East, there have been, and there has been in the past year, any number of training events, in-person, virtual, hybrid. There's been quite a bit of leadership training taking place. And for that, again, thank you for everything that you have done there. Something that, as I was reading the reports that the District Commodores sent me, District One South had an event called Quallapalooza. That was an event where, it was a two-week-long event that focused on tubeboat training, nighttime patrols, and proficiency in currency maintenance. You know, shout out to whoever came up with the name Quallapalooza. Am I pronouncing that right, Mike? Okay. Yeah, just kind of a, yeah, a neat little name to generate some interest and enthusiasm there. So, you know, Mike, thank you for that. In terms of member engagement, all of our districts participated in what I would term high-visibility events. Such things as St. Patrick's Day Parade, Fleet Week, the various regional air shows that we all have, of course, National Safe Boating Week, Wear Your Life Jacket to Work Day, and, you know, various other public affairs, things that our, our members become involved in. A couple of things in D7 that kind of jumped out at me when I was reading the reports. They're conducting a member satisfaction survey. John and Martin have put this together. And I, for one, you know, very, very anxious to, to see the results of that. Excuse me. Also, D7, you'll see this Saturday night, D7 had our National Exhaust, excuse me, National Exhaust of the Year Natalie Bunting. So congratulations to you all there. Thank you. The third area that I wanted to touch on was, was Coast Guard support. Again, throughout all five of our districts, we are seeing the continuing support of local stations, sectors, air stations, cutters, you know, the broad range of, of support that is provided by our chaplains, our interpreters, our culinary assistants, our commercial and uninspected passenger vessel examiners, our medical folks, and of course, our aux air folks. D5 South, I think most of us are aware of the Key Bridge mishap from a number of months ago. D5 South had 29 of their members support the Key Bridge Response Team. And that, you know, very, 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 very strong support of that mishap. And shout out to those 29 members. D7 had 43 members support space launches. You know, had a few miles down the road and they shoot stuff up in the air. There's got to be folks out in the water, out on the water, you know, to create a safety zone and kind of make sure that things don't go astray. So, you know, shout out to, to the D7 members who participate in that. I'd also like to take a minute to talk a little bit about student programs. One of the student programs that has been incredibly successful in, in LANT East is the auxiliary university program. The AUP program in LANT East has provided any number of direct commissions. Sector Virginia AUP program had 10 direct commissions from the AUP units, which I think is, is remarkable. Another student program that has gained tremendous traction in LANT East is the Sea Scout ship in Washington DC. We have a ship in Washington DC that has 67 members. The ship has two of its members currently at the Coast Guard Academy in Swab summer. It has six members who are currently working with a recruiter, getting ready to go to Cape May. The ship also had an honor graduate at AIM who received a letter of assurance, which means he will receive an appointment to the Coast Guard Academy. And that young man, in addition to being a Sea Scout member, is a, is an auxiliaryist. So, you know, kudos to, to the efforts there for, for the Sea Scouts. I would also like to give a shout out to the ForceCom leadership team. Todd Monis, the A NACO, his deputy David Elliott, Barry Denton, Director of A, Phil Poole, Director of G, Lee Zimmerman, Director of, of H, and Farren Petty, Director of T. You will see later this morning the good work that H has done and A has done when you see their presentations, excuse me, right after the, right after the break. Thank you to everyone for being here. Thank you for your commitment. And on a personal note, thank you for your support in, for me. I think many of you know, my wife passed away several months ago. And thank you all who reached out to me. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commodore Fred. I will now call up D NACO Atlantic West and Operations Patrick Ferry.
Thank you, Kelly. Good morning, everyone. You know, it's always an honor to get up here, a privilege to represent the men and women that make up the Atlantic West area and the entire National Response and Operations staff. So, you know, I want to, I want to shout out to the district leadership and to the staff for everything that you've done, for your support of me. You've made my job a heck of a lot easier over the past two years. So thank you very much. I want to talk a few minutes about what goes on in Atlantic West and our, our districts, our regions, because I know the Commodores don't want to stand up and, and brag about it. They need to be, needs to be talked about. There's a lot of great things going on. So let's start from east to west. And we'll start in the Ninth Eastern region. And first and foremost, I'm happy to report that because of the willingness and the ability of the members of the Ninth Eastern to support Sector Eastern Great Lakes and Sector Eastern Great Lakes willingness to engage with the auxiliary, Sector Eastern Grace Lakes was the winner of the Coast Guard Integration Award with the auxiliary. So Rich and Steve, great job on, on working with them. And I know you did that in, in many high-profile ways and in many ways that were just taken for granted in a suit. So great job to everybody in, in Ninth Eastern. The members of Ninth Eastern are taking advantage of some of the curtailment of active duty Coast Guard duties and missions in the area. Their staffing station's small on Lake Ontario for SAR this boating season. Their culinary assistance program is flourishing with many, many deployments and assistance with cutters within the, the area. And several members have qualified in the unmanned aerial systems program, you know, piloting drones. So looking ahead to, you know, the future, they're, they're on top of it and going after it. And the district, like all of the districts in Atlantic West, are now finalizing plans for their upcoming district conferences. In the Ninth Central, more good stuff going on. They've taken initiative and held three separate boating schools this year, which has successfully been attended by over 120 members of, of the region. It's resulted in a marked improvement in operational readiness and proficiency. It's provided the opportunity for many of the members to get their currency maintenance completed, three-year check rides completed, and also some initial qualifications examinations have taken place. So thanks for taking that proactive approach. I think we all need that, and most of us do. And this, this is, this is a little different, but I think it bears mentioning, the West Marine dealers in Southern Michigan have requested to be provided with as many if-found stickers that they can be. Now, that might seem a little mundane. The district has stepped up and provided them with that. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, we don't know how many SAR cases were prevented just by having those stickers available. So, you know, glad to see that. It saves a lot of money, Coast Guard, a lot of time, and gets a lot of paddlecraft back to the rightful owners. So good job. And lastly, auxiliaryist Ethan Heller of Flotilla 241 in Bay City, Michigan, while coming home from a regatta patrol for the 4th of July, saw a house on fire and went up and immediately started beating on the door, ringing the doorbell. Someone answered. And as a result of his quick actions, two adults, two children, and a family dog were saved. So bravo, zoo of Mr. Heller. Ninth Western, been very busy and will be busy again this week. They supported the Republican National Convention. And the Coast Guard's mission with, with maritime security up there, they acted as support and command post by tracking assets. up there, they acted as support and command post by tracking assets, federal, local, and state, that were used to support some security zones. 240 personnel were tracked, 27 vessels. And they're looking forward to doing that again here, starting late this week at the Democrats' convention, which will start soon in Chicago. They're working very hard to support the specialized areas that are, that need support and augmentation. Credentialing has been achieved for the first American Sign Language interpreter in the auxiliary. Three flight surgeons have been qualified and two ombudsmen. District has supported, proudly represented the Coast Guard Auxiliary at the Coast Guard Festival in Grand Haven, Michigan this year by providing culinary assistance and recruiting support and also coordinating all the visits to the various Coast Guard vessels that were up there and on display. And over 400,000 people attended that event. National Commodore representing us there. So, great job Patty and Steve. In the eighth district, the eastern region, Chris Whitaker and Ron Beno, you know, they were the only district in the country to show a real significant increase in net membership at the end of the year. They ended up with 915 members. They currently boast 939 and have over 20 applications in process. This is the result of a program that was initiated at a flotilla, at a flotilla in the eighth eastern. It's called Catch and Keep. It started out at grassroots, worked its way up to division, to the district, has been embraced, and is working quite well. They're also taking a proactive approach to getting many, as many QE missions out of the way and as much training done. So, you know, they're not overloaded with the Thanksgiving and Christmas, Christmas rush that I need a QE and it's almost the end of the year. So, thank you for taking that proactive approach and, and taking care of our members. Meetings with local units are ongoing as they try to fulfill the gaps and great job going on. Eighth Coastal, Pete Scamardo and Donna Day, their gaps have changed, obviously, as, as time goes by. The, what was found in the gap analysis has significantly changed and they're constantly talking with sector and units to fill the needs of, of augmentation and support. The district participated, eighth western sponsored a SARx exercise this summer and the eighth, all the eight, the district regions participated. And a crew from the eighth coastal one. What's interesting about this is the three crew members had never met one another or crewed with one another before that event. Speaks volumes to standardized training. So, congratulations to eighth western for sponsoring and congratulations to eighth coastal. And lastly, Flotilla 68 at Bay's Galveston was named Flotilla of the Year. Commodore from Otto went to Houston and presented that award to a very deserving group of only 31 members. Eighth Western, Brock Stevens and Bob Beno, or I'm sorry, eighth western Brock Stevens and Bob Arismun. Members of their EM staff were recognized with the, by winning the Niles P. Thompson Innovation Award for some work they were doing with QIS mapping. So, congratulations there. Great job by those folks. Not only is that going to be useful to us as auxiliary, but will also be useful to the active duty. They sponsored the SARx competition. And what's neat about that is Brock is now thinking about holding a similar event next year, but having it focus on paddlecraft operators. So, Brock, I hope you carry that forward and, and we see that come to fruition. They've also stood up a program with Coast Guard Cutter Cheyenne to get people qualified. It's import OODs and watch standards and also participated in an active duty recruiting event called Mighty Mississippi in Davenport, Iowa, which I know the active duty was very, very pleased with, with their efforts. Response and Prevention, Assistant National Commodore Rick Saunders and Deputy Anthony Marzano staff doing a great job. I don't want to get into the specifics of what they're doing, although they, they've done some great things. International Affairs has grown by leaps and bounds over the, the past year. Emergency Management is working hard to provide training, to find ways to get the auxiliary to interact and integrate more with the active duty. Navigation Systems, Kim Cole, a lot of good stuff going on. Cooperation, Master Chief Parks has been able to get some new handbooks in place, updated stuff. Also trying to get some billets into some active duty sea schools for aids to navigation technicians. And Response, Royce of Hoka, some great reports have been generated this year to help keep all of us updated on where our crews and our facilities are in their training and their currency. Also was able to clean up a lot of stuff that was on the books but didn't exist. So, more to come there. And I'm sure you will hear the details from them at OPCOM. In closing, I want to again thank the Commodores, Chiefs of Staff, the staff, the national staff for everything you do. Like I said, it's made my job a lot easier. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commodore Ferry. Up next, D NACO Pacific Area and Recreational Boating Safety, Tiny Singler.
Well, good morning, everyone. It's fantastic to see you here. And I tell you, every time I get up here, it's, it's amazing to me. And it has been the greatest privilege and honor to have the people of the PAC area and recreational boating safety. I couldn't ask for anything more. And it's one of those things you look in life and you say, you know, I enjoyed this. I like doing this. But it's time, this is the last time I'll be up here. So, you won't have to hear me again, but that's okay. So, I want to go over, you know, it's a great time of the year to be part of our organization. You know, we started out with National Safe Boating Week, which I thought was outstanding in the PAC area. You know, we had events going on everywhere, public affair events. We had all of the islands and, and Hawaii sign territories. So, we had Alaska sign, get the proclamation signed. We had 22 cities signed out of District 13. And we had all of the states in our area that had proclamations made. That started off the whole year. What I call the boating season, what everybody calls the boating season. Some people, it's a little bit later, but it's right in that area. And then OpTrax went on as a whole, okay, getting our people ready to be on the water. And then the efforts of our marine dealer partner, that our new partner that stepped in there and helped us was fantastic. And that's something that was created through our RBS department with our outreach, reaching out to West Marine. They helped tremendously. We have some other ones working in the works right now. But just, just also too, just a little bragging power, if you noticed when the Vice National Commodore stood up and talked about the three districts that had 100% on the NACO three four, three-star diversity award, where'd they come from? PAC area. Thank you. So, that's a great job. Okay. And, and you know, we're, we're ready to, to, all of the districts have got their new decaps, have been vetted, all their DCOs, DCOSs, and they're ready for their elections. I hate to see this group go, but it's always saying that we need to move on. So, we'll have a new group coming in, but they're ready for them. So, just a little bit, DLM North, just some highlights, okay. You have, the DCO is Commodore Curtis Han and his Chief of Staff is Jim Losi. And, you know, some of the things that I love seeing because I love recruiting, above loving recreational boating safety, the two other areas that I dearly love is recruiting and also to about training. And, and what has been going on in DLM North is their course continuing to augment, the Coast Guard units are above and beyond all of the other affairs. Their National Safe Boating Week, some of the, Curtis sent a, a paper out on it with a whole list of photos and stuff. It was fantastic. All right. But they also have an HR resources group that is going around and helping in the district to make people more comfortable with recruiting. And I think that's something we're all going to have to do in the future, is we don't, everybody can't, cannot be a recruiter, but we can sure help them and give them some tools to do it with, you know. D four, I mean, DLM South, what can I say? They're, they're, all kind of new programs coming there. First of all, they've set it up to where they went through the skills blank, bank and got that all updated for the whole district. They've did a total cleanup on that. They have also developed a benefits package that is for the members, kind of helping them and creating with the last half of the year, even a training compendium, compendium, or, or certification compendium, which is fantastic. There used to be one we had years ago with National, but it kind of got, whoa. So, it got too crowded and got carried away. Okay. So, and, you know, I, I can't say enough about that. Anything that we can create for the members is great. And D 13 is of course the, and I'm sorry, with DLM South was Commodore Michael Barsarth. And also his Chief of Staff is Rodney Donahue. In D 13, we have Commodore Dan Keenley and his Chief of Staff is Craig Hartman. Craig's here today. Dan wasn't able to make it. And of course, once again, fantastic National Safe Boating Week, had a major area event, SART, which is the Southern Area Regional Training. And they're trying to come up with some for the north and do that in an area, almost per sectors and stuff. And then they had the Rose Festival, which is a major event, several facilities out there helping with it. It's a days long, several days in order to get this event done. Multiple, multiple people visiting and of course escorting the fleet through there. And then the next up they got coming is the Seattle Seafair, which is another major event. And, and it takes months of training. So, it's not like something that happens overnight. And of course, D 14, which is Hawaii, Guam, Samoa, and Singapore detachment there. And of course, the Commodore DCO there is Michael Kerrigan and his Chief of Staff is Jody Nelson. And, you know, they secured proclamations. I love this. I, I love saying it from every island and territory, you know. Only in our organization do we reach out that far. I hate to think, I've never figured it out, the number of miles that is included, but I mean, we're talking thousands of miles. Okay. And they're, they're ready for their elections. And of course, everything else has been going on. They, they've got involvement out there with paddlecraft even from onshore. And they, they've had vessel exams happening. And that's not, you'd think that'd be a big thing in Hawaii, but after being there and talking to the leadership there, you know, it's not like a whole bar of people have boats there. A lot of them are fishing and, and, and six-pack and 12-pack type vessels, you know. And then D 17, which is Alaska, we have Commodore Marion Parish. And we have Chief of Staff David Larkin. I've known David for years. So, it's just, he was in D 13 when I was there. Of course, I started out in D 1 North and I don't know if anybody ever remembers me there, but I was there for almost eight or nine years. Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway, it is my pleasure to, with the things they've, they've been promoting activities for the auxiliary. I mean, they've done a heck of a job of even getting to fulfill their 23 to 24 operations plan. They are of course still highly successful in chaplain support and culinary assistance, thousands of hours there for culinary assistance, operating on the cutters. And, and then of course, they're doing EM support training, which I think is outstanding, and even getting positions where they're getting their people certified. And so, with that in mind, and they have a new method that they linked it to their district website for the RFF, or Request for Forces, of being able to augment the active duty. Now, I'm also going to come here to my recreational boating safety. Look, I cannot say enough. I know all of you are going to talk about your programs. It's unbelievable to me what it takes to, especially in the education department, of what it takes to get Boat America or BSNS and trying to get it through the process of NASBA approval. Not only that, then you got to go state by state and, and, and get the approval from the state. You know, we, I, I used to think, and I know I'm getting close there and I'm actually there, but I got to say, I used to think there was this big building and a whole floor where the department sat there. That's what you'd think was happening. Instead, we're in multiple states and getting all of this done. Look, I cannot say enough for the recreational boating safety directorates between Commodore Bob Lauer being the A NACO, Chris Wilson being his assistant. And then of course, you have Dave Fuller with Public Education and Ellen Fuller with Outreach. And you have Jim Cortez and his assistant there, Tom Niles, which has done a heck of a job with VE and PV. It has been my pleasure. I always run out of time. I don't know if it's slow talking or something. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commodore Singler. Up next, we have our D NACO Information Technology and Planning, Commodore Linda Merriman.
Thank you, Kelly. Morning, everybody. Gosh, I enjoy doing this so much. I hope that you get some value out of what I talk about. And I hope as you listen to what I say, if you have questions, you reach out to me when I'm done later today, tomorrow, and ask, because I would enjoy discussing any of these topics with you. So, it's my privilege to have the opportunity to share with you some of the things that are happening in Information Technology and Planning's five directorates. On the information technology side, under Assistant National Commodore Susan Davies, the User Support and Services Directorate is led by Director Jen Austin and Deputy Bill Ballard. They conducted a small in-person OX-10 Information Services Officer class in April at Fifth District Southern Region's D train. And there were 18 students who were taught here earlier in the week. The virtual OX-10 continues to be a success with two classes totaling 24 students recently finishing. Over 40 members have expressed interest in the September virtual class, which may result in us scheduling two sessions. Moving forward, a significantly reduced OX-10 Sea School quota for fiscal year 25 is disappointing. The team is looking into allocating the fewer available, available seats to instructor training with the expectation that successful graduates will then teach others at the district level or through the online classes. The monthly Information Services Officer Virtual Seminar Series remains popular with an average of about 50 attendees per class. The topics focus on areas where the team sees the most issues or inconsistencies and how different IS officers and districts handle the data that is entered into OX Data 2. Also monthly, the Information Services Officer Meeting is well-received with an average of about 80 IS officers at every level participating in each session. Notes from the mission, from the sessions are sent to all districts and division IS officers and are copied to the district Commodores. A critical service provided to members, the Coast Guard, and the public by the IT group is the Help Desks. In Q1, the Help Desk team processed 560 tickets, which was slightly down from previous quarters. On the OX Data 2 side, the improvement seen in Q4 with the number of tickets addressed by the Tier One Support Team is holding steady with 630 service requests handled in Q1. Before Q4 2023, there were over 800 requests per quarter. This reduction is attributed to the change that was made to delay sending OX Data login information to new members until they had been onboard for 45 days. The Directorate is hosting a session this weekend here for Communications Services District Staff Officers. Topics covered will include a review of the Moodle CS Officer Training Course, cybersecurity and PII considerations when creating website content and links, and a discussion about the strategies for replacing the websites without webmasters. That's WOW, Web Page Creation Tool. The Computer Software and Systems Directorate is led by Director Amanda Constant and Deputy Carlos Sarenas. Work continues to improve the member experience across the multiple different systems requiring login. The new WOW Member Zone Cognito Authentication Solution was successfully rolled out in May, allowing members to log into the auxiliary directory, the auxiliary online classroom, and the existing member zone using the same set of login credentials. and the existing member zone using the same set of login credentials. In partnership with the Training Directorate, tests contained in the National Testing Center are being migrated to the Moodle Online Classroom. When this finishes in Q4, it will eliminate the need for members to log into a separate system to complete required tests for certification and currency maintenance. Requirements gathering for upgrading the auxiliary website infrastructure is ongoing. The results will drive the long-term replacement strategy for the 15-year-old WOW system. The Auxiliary Internet Resource System, which is known as AIRS, the precursor to WOW, is no longer supported. Planning is underway to sunset the AIRS platform and its associated remnant sites. The website monitoring service that we use was expanded to cover all auxiliary sites, ensuring that downtime is quickly detected and alerts sent to the appropriate systems administration staff. The new Cybersecurity Directorate is led by Director Joe Espino and Deputy Cliff Neave. The Directorate was successfully established in April with responsibilities for both internal auxiliary national IT system security and support to the Coast Guard through the Auxiliary Cybersecurity Augmentation Program. In conjunction with the Sea Directorate, the team responded to a denial-of-service attack against the WOW production server, which overwhelmed it with a flood of requests. Service degradation was quickly mitigated. A long-term solution is under investigation, and that kind of thing only gets worse and worse as time goes on. At the request of the Coast Guard Office of Port and Facility Compliance, the director presented a brief to them on the auxiliary cyber program, which focused on the support the auxiliary can provide to the Coast Guard field unit level. Feedback was positive and included input that will help fine-tune future augmentation offerings. On the Performance and Student Programs side, under Assistant National Commodore Peter Jensen, the Student Programs Directorate is led by Director Jean McNamara and Deputy Bruce Johnson. The Auxiliary University Program held steady at 272 students across 45 institutions. The University of North Georgia is the newest brick-and-mortar AUP school. With their addition, there is now an AUP presence in all six of the nation's senior military colleges, that are those that have an ROTC program under U.S. Code Title 10. And I want to thank Commodore Fred for all of the support that we get from Atlantic East. It's much appreciated and contributes greatly to the success of the program. The auxiliary scout, the OX Scout Program decreased from 668 to 621 members, still in 34 auxiliary-sponsored ships. This is within the expected ebb and flow for the program as young people move into and out of scouting programs. Five sea scouts were selected by the Coast Guard Academy for admission to the Class of 2028. Four scouts and two alternates were selected for the Coast Guard Cutter Eagle Summer Experience, and four were chosen for the Summer Academy Introduction Mission. There are 274 active participants in the Academy Admissions Partners Program. Virtual training continues with a session in May on uniforms and OXDATA II activity reporting. It was seen live by 30 members with the sessions recorded and available to others for later viewing. And then last but definitely not least, the Performance Measurement Directorate is led by Director Kevin Redden and Deputy Harry Parsons. Their Strategic Plan Tracking Team conducted monitoring organization-wide progress on the current national strategic plan, as the Vice National Commodore reported earlier, so will not repeat the statistics. The 2023 value of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Report was recently completed. It will be available next week on the National Commodore's webpage under the National Leadership Documents link. It is the 10th in a series of annual reports produced by the Directorate according to a Coast Guard-approved methodology. The principal finding for 2023 is that for every $1 that the Coast Guard spends on the auxiliary, it receives back $9.82 in services and cash equivalents. This is a modest improvement from 2022's $9.57 return, but still significantly lower than 2019's $12.54 result. 2023 numbers reflect the slowly growing recovery from the impact of COVID-19 restrictions in 2020 and 2021, and despite that, the report demonstrates that the auxiliary continues to represent a substantial value proposition to the Coast Guard. It's important to note that the source of most of the base data for the value report is OXDATA II. There are inherent limitations when we use self-reported data. Most likely, this results in undervaluing auxiliary contributions. The best way to improve this factor remains for all of us to continue to emphasize accurate and complete reporting by members of all of their activities. Those are just a few highlights of what's happening in Information Technology and Planning. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Commodore Merriman. Up next, we have our President of the National Association of Commodores, Robert Schaefer.
Thank you, Commodores and shipmates. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the other members of our excellent National Association of Commodores leadership team. Clark Godshaw, our president, or our vice president, I should say, and Bob Lauer, treasurer and immediate past president. Carolyn Bellmore is our secretary, who's unable to be with us today, and Peter Jensen, our registrar, hard-working fellow. And I'm honored to be a part of such an excellent team. Our continuing mission is to leverage the expertise of our members, the Commodores, to assist the National Commodore and the National Board of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary in advancing all of the various programs. We provide a forum for active dialogue with elected leaders, and we extend an invitation to membership to all newly-elected or appointed Commodores, and we look forward to extending that invitation to more of you in the very near future as election season gets underway. We look forward to meeting with many of you at the National Association of Commodores Luncheon, which will be held on Saturday of this convention. The, one of the largest, one of our significant projects is a national memorial monument dedicated to honoring the auxiliary Commodores who have passed the bar, and these all were exemplary leaders who devoted countless hours to making the auxiliary the world's most prominent volunteer maritime organization. The memorial monument is comprised of two large marble stones and is inscribed with the names of all national Commodores who have passed and of all other Commodores who have passed since 2005. The next phase of this project will be transporting it and installing it in a place of honor at the US Coast Guard Training Center in Cape May, New Jersey. We're very pleased to report that we have attained both the appropriate approvals and the necessary funding for this relocation and for the engraving of over 20 names. Although there are a lot of moving parts to coordinate, including getting transportation vendors and installation contractors, it's our goal to get the monument moved and installed by the close of this year. And once in plan, once in place, rather, we are planning a formal dedication to be held early next year when all of that can be arranged. So stay tuned for all of that. I look forward to seeing many of you Saturday at our luncheon, where we'll have more details about many of our activities. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for all of the Commodores out there for your devotion to duty as senior leaders of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary.
Thank you, Commodores. I would now like to ask Commander Weiss to come up and read a few of our many awards that we have for this week. Commodore Formato and Captain, if you don't mind to come down for the awards presentation. Photos will be taken by our photographers that we have here and available at our website. You can see QR codes behind us for those, so if you need any pictures.
The Auxiliary Commandant Letter of Commendation Ribbon is awarded to auxiliars serving in any capacity with the Coast Guard or the Coast Guard Auxiliary for an act of service resulting in outstanding achievement. The following awards are all signed by the previous Chief Director of the Auxiliary, Captain Troy P. Glendy. Auxiliarist Charles Hayes, please come forward. Charles Hayes. Moving on. Auxiliarist Mark Johnson, please come forward. Auxiliarist Johnson is being recognized for his performance of duty as Division Chief of Communication and Education, where he has afforded members of the auxiliary the guidance and materials needed to achieve their goals of attaining qualifications in the areas of prevention outreach and marine safety and administrative management. Thank you, Auxiliarist Johnson. Auxiliarist David Larkson, Larkin, please come forward. Auxiliarist Larkin is being recognized for his performance of duty as Branch Assistant Auxiliary Upper Level Officers Course, where he worked closely with several other instructors of the Upper Level Officers Course. He successfully delivered in-depth and well-researched courses of instruction. Thank you, Auxiliarist Larkin. Auxiliarist Rudy Lopez, please come forward. Auxiliarist Lopez is being recognized for his performance of duty as Public Affairs Director at Branch Chief Professional Standards, where he arranged and led 35 oral boards for public affairs competency qualification, expertly providing an engaging forum to increase knowledge sharing and collaboration while ensuring that candidates met standards for the three public affairs qualification levels. Thank you, Auxiliarist Lopez. Auxiliarist Jack Nev III, please come forward. Auxiliarist Nev is being recognized for his performance of duty as Public Affairs Director at Branch Assistant Lant East, where he arranged numerous oral boards and public affairs competency qualification during this period, providing an engaging forum to increase knowledge and collaboration throughout the auxiliary public affairs community. Thank you, Auxiliarist Nev. Auxiliarist Robert Schaefer, please come forward. Auxiliarist Schaefer is being recognized for his performance of duty as National Safety Officer, where he reconstituted the Auxiliary National Safety Board and reinvigorated safety as a priority for all auxiliars. Thank you, Auxiliarist Schaefer. And while we're on the topic of safety, for the rest of you coming up here, be very careful when you cross over this line up here. There's a bunch of cables, and it's not tied down to the floor very well, so please be careful. Auxiliarist Mark Villeneuve, please come forward. Auxiliarist Villeneuve is being recognized for his performance of duty as Branch Chief of Affinity Programs, where he contributed over 300 hours leading, advising, and proposing guidelines for future affinity groups while navigating the complexities of active-duty personnel intricacies, affinity group development, and nonprofit organizations. Thank you, Auxiliarist Villeneuve. The Auxiliary Achievement Medal is awarded to auxiliars in recognition for their sustained and superior professional and leadership achievements in administration or operations. The following awards were signed by prior Chief Director of the Auxiliary, Captain Troy P. Glendy. Auxiliarist Jawan Beck, please come forward. Auxiliarist Beck is being recognized for her performance as Branch Chief International Outreach Indian Ocean and Western Pacific Ocean in DOPACCOM, where she organized various meetings and partnership opportunities among volunteer organizations from various nations. Thank you, Auxiliarist Beck. Auxiliarist Hector Corrales, please come forward. Auxiliarist Corrales is being recognized for his performance as Division Chief Social Media, where he built a strong cohesive team with the new social media division that supported frequent and dynamic content across five social media platforms and improvised the discourse between the national staff and local units regarding social media use. Thank you, Auxiliarist Corrales. Auxiliarist David Fuller, please come forward. Auxiliarist Fuller is being recognized for his performance as Branch Chief Recreational Boating Safety Operations Partners, where he developed and delivered multiple presentations for national conferences of America's Boating Club on methods for performing vessel safety checks, risk management awareness, and using safety checks to increase new membership opportunities. Thank you, Auxiliarist Fuller. Auxiliarist Mark Hartigan, please come forward. Auxiliarist Hartigan is being recognized for his performance as Division Chief Technical Support, where he successfully modified the end-of-year transition of the Training Management Report, changing what had been a labor-intensive annual work item into a sustainable automatic process. This innovation saved the team 40 hours of manual work annually. Thank you, Auxiliarist Hartigan. Auxiliarist Michael Mitchell, please come forward. Auxiliarist Mitchell is being recognized for his performance as Deputy Director Prevention, where he worked with commercial vessels activity team to provide guidance and knowledge for updating instructional slides for uninspected passenger vessel examiners. Auxiliarist Raphael Shabatay, please come forward. Auxiliar Shabatay is being recognized for his performance as Branch Chief International Outreach Southern Command, SouthCOM, and as Branch Assistant Qualification Administration, where he managed relationships with international outreach SouthCOM partners to include the successful restart of the virtual partner forums and acting as a language qualification examiner. Thank you, Auxiliar Shabatay. Auxiliarist William Sorrentino? Please come forward. Auxiliar Sorrentino is being recognized for his performance as Deputy Director Administrative Investigations, where he improved the professional development and performance of members of the National Administrative Investigation Staff by streamlining communication between management and members of the Directorate. Thank you, Auxiliar Sorrentino. The Auxiliary Commendation Medal is awarded to auxiliars in recognition of outstanding assistance that furthers any of the auxiliary's authorized activities, except operations. The following awards are all signed by prior Chief Director of the Auxiliary, Captain Troy P. Glendy. Auxiliarist Larry Fletcher, please come forward. Auxiliarist John Stir, please come forward. Auxiliar Stir is being recognized for his performance of duty as Branch Assistant Data Entry Quality Control, where they recaptured over 537,000 missing legacy Mission Code data elements in the Auxiliary II database program, resulting in completed accounting of valuable historic auxiliary support data, returning over 34 million auxiliary activity hours to mission support records. Thank you, Auxiliar Stir. And let's give another round of applause to all of today's award recipients.
All right. We are at a point of a break, if that is okay with you, sir. Perfect. One quick announcement I just want to mention, if you, when you registered, you got, saw this piece of paper. This QR code will take you to pretty much all documents related to MACON. I'm going to have our agendas up on this also, so any changes to classrooms, any changes that are made will be reflected on that. So if you have the QR code, we're going to try to streamline things a little bit more. But at this time, we're going to take a 15-minute break, so let's go 15 minutes and then be back in your seats. Thank you. Thank you.
We would just talk about life in general. This loss, I'm going to carry always. Doug was just an amazing man. He knew that aux man from cover to cover. And he would tell people, and he was right when he told them that, his primary job was to keep NACO out of prison. And he did a good job, because here I am. But I was honored to appoint Bruce Kelton, A NACO Chief Counsel. Bruce is incredible attorney, a great scholar of the aux man and of the auxiliary. And in his short tenure as A NACO, he's proven valuable. Bruce, welcome aboard and thank you. So the remainder of my remarks are going to be, I'm going to phrase this as, "Life has a national commodore," because we reflect upon quite a few things. I'd like to start out with giving a shout-out to our RBS folks. RBS is job one, and those of you who know me well know that my roots are deep-seated in RBS. We, as an organization, our RBS people, were able through their efforts to decrease boating accidents by 11.3%, and more importantly, fatalities are down 10%. You know, a lot of things we can't do, we can't measure, we can't determine what we prevent, but this is something we can measure and this is something to be proud of. Thank you, I appreciate that. And I am sure the families of all the lives saved appreciate that, and all the SARS-prevented appreciate that. On my travels, and I've been all over the past few months, I've had to speak to a number of auxiliaries involved in active-duty recruiting, as well as auxiliary recruiting. And it was very encouraging speaking to them. From my trips to headquarters and my meetings at headquarters, I know we've been filling the buses to Cape May lately, and the future is promising. However, I need to tell you that we have a greater footprint, a greater presence in active-duty recruiting offices. And come this fall, our auxiliary recruiting support specialists, there's a mouthful, for putting somebody on that bus to Cape May. I have a thought for you. What if we were to do this as a flotilla? And that the flotilla has someone on that bus to Cape May, and that flotilla received that $1,000? Wouldn't that be great? Food for thought. We have recently significantly increased our augmentation to active duties in the way of support in so many different areas. And I know active duty is grateful for that. They constantly are thanking me every time they have any chance to speak to me. So I want to pass that thanks and that gratitude on to you. We've had some discussions here this week regarding the commencement of uniform inspections. And someone had recommended or suggested that we refer to them as uniform assessments. I really like that idea. This is not a pass or fail. It's a training opportunity. And I want to encourage each of our elected leaders to encourage their members to have that assessment conducted. And as the elected leaders are conducting the assessment, I would like them to do that as though someone were doing it for them, to keep that in mind. These are your shipmates, your friends. This is not supposed to be something rigid or punitive. As National Commodore, I was invited on April 12th to travel to Radnor, Pennsylvania for the dedication of a park to Emlyn Toenell, which would have been his 100th birthday. For those of you unaware, Emlyn Toenell was an African-American Second World War Coast Guard hero, and I do mean hero. In 1944, after his ship was torpedoed, he pulled shipmates who were on fire from flames and used his own body to extinguish those flames. Two years later, a shipmate fell into frigid waters, and he dove in and saved him. For those of you who think the name might be familiar, after his military service and his service to the Coast Guard, for which, by the way, he did receive a lifesaving medal, Emlyn Toenell hitchhiked to New York to try out for the New York Giants. And he was the first African-American to play for the New York Giants. He played 14 seasons for the Giants. So when I was invited to that dedication, that park, it was probably one of the greatest honors, to be able to honor the memory of such a great man and to have his hometown dedicate a park to him. Some of you may have heard that the Navigator, now known as the Auxiliary, which I really love, by the way, will no longer be printed. That's true. Financial decision was made because of the cost of printing and more so the cost of postage to put that in your mailbox. So keeping in 2024, embracing technology, it will still exist, it will exist in digital Number of years ago, I had the honor to serve as a branch chief in uniform support. And it was something I really enjoyed doing. But as I did it, I learned that things within the active duty uniform world changed very frequently. And active duty has a Coast Guard Uniform Regulation Manual that could reflect those changes. And we have a commandant instruction, an aux man, which is, any change to the aux man, because it's a commandant instruction, is a heavy lift. And often, the aux man was not current, not up to date with the uniform changes because of the frequency of the changes. So many years back, I had a vision that there would be an auxiliary uniform regulation manual. And as I undertook my duties in NACO, that vision changed to the point where I wanted to see chapters 10 and 11, uniforms and awards, removed from the commandant instruction, from the aux man, and become separate documents. And I brought my vision to Lee Zimmerman, Director H., Terry Barth, Director W., and I asked them to help me achieve my vision. I want to focus on the H part, the uniform part. What I had hoped for was a separate manual, a guide, a handbook. What I received so far exceeded my expectations. And I'm not gonna steal too much of Director Zimmerman's thunder, but the product that I received was an interactive digital uniform guide. And for those of you who had an opportunity to see it so far, you'll know when I tell you, it is absolutely amazing. For those who haven't, you will this week. And I'll have Director Zimmerman speak more to that. I had an opportunity recently to interact with a Sea Scout ship in Michigan to learn that the ship enrolled four of its members into the auxiliary and enlisted one into the Coast Guard. That's from one Sea Scout ship. That's absolutely amazing. And at the same time, in conversation with Commodore Merriman, I learned that in the class of United States Coast Guard Academy class of 2028, there will be five Sea Scouts. This is very touching, this means so much. Just to peek into the future, you'll hear more about this in discussion with Master Chief Parks. The future looks like we will create an FSO position for RNS. This is something I support. I think we need this all the way down to the flotilla level, and you'll hear more about that in time to come. Very soon to be NACO, Kirkwood and I, I change the title every day, by the way, I'm driving her crazy. So today, it's very soon to be NACO. Kirkwood and I had the honor of being invited to headquarters in Washington, D.C. for the 85th anniversary of the auxiliary. It was an excellent ceremony and event. Admiral Arguin, keynote speaker. And I wish each of you a happy 85th birthday, and I thank you for your support, it's a great organization. Very recently, Nexcom was brought onboard with Push to Talk. And for somebody technology challenged as myself, I could even use this. So I think this is a great tool, and hopefully, we never have to use it in response to a disaster or anything else. As you may know, we received a $105,000 grant from the Coast Guard for paddlecraft. Some of the funds that were requested in that grant, we did not receive. So the association, using dedicated funds from Campaign for Zero, matched that $105,000 grant so that the training component could occur. And whatever monies were left over after the cost of that training could be brought to the board for use for things like additional decals for paddles, additional whistles. And it gives me great pleasure to use Campaign for Zero funds. Number of years, the association has been soliciting donations from private individuals, private corporations specifically for Campaign for Zero, which was the utopian goal of zero boating fatalities. Now, because they were solicited in that manner, those funds could only be used for recreational boating safety. They're known as restrictive funds. Well, by matching that grant, we were able to do some really, really good things with those funds, and I'm proud of that. In the first half of this year, our I Directorate has had 40 interpreters assist in 20 languages. The support for active duty, as well as for ourselves with this, is absolutely outstanding. And I say that to bring to your attention that we also had someone interpret an American Sign Language, an ASL, for a very critical and very sensitive investigation. I recently traveled to Grand Haven, Michigan for Coast Guard Fest, and by chance, I met that ASL interpreter, auxiliaryist, Lacy Udek. And I was so impressed with her and her commitment to both the ASL program and the auxiliary. Lacy is also a very key member in the Coast Guard pipe band. But I knew about the request for the ASL interpreter, I knew it occurred, I didn't know who it was, so it was an honor to actually meet her. Like to take a moment or two to talk about my experience in Grand Haven. I was invited out there last year, but I couldn't make it. As many of you know, I suffer spinal issues that have since been resolved. As you can see, this year, I can actually stand here. So I did make it this year, and this year was the 100th anniversary of Coast Guard Fest. Excuse me. And I wouldn't know where to begin describing it. It was one of the most amazing experiences of my life. It was such a great honor. I was out there with Commodore Thatch, and Commodore, would it be inaccurate if I said we were treated like royalty? We were. And I got a chance to meet Chaplain Bowden and spent some time talking to her, also with the Commandant McPog. It was an absolutely great experience. Keeping that in mind, I want to give some verbal recognition to the auxiliary incident commander of that event, and that was Rob Kump. I don't know how he managed to be four places at one time, but he did. Every time I turned around, he was there. And every time I wasn't sure where I was supposed to be or what I was supposed to be doing, he was there. But there's also something else you need to know. Two years ago, he approached me with the idea of recognizing Commander Mike Smith, who was Mr. Coast Guard, Mr. Coast Guard Fest, he coordinated since 2006, recognizing him as an honorary Commodore. I supported it. The idea was brought to the Commandant and Admiral Fagan approved it. Sadly, before last year's fest, when it was to be presented, Commodore Smith passed away. So I had the honor of bringing the plaque, the certificate and the flag to Grand Haven and presenting it to his wife and his adult children. And that was one of the most touching experiences of my life. He was a huge supporter of the auxiliary. And a lot of people may not realize, one of his many jobs as commander in the United States Coast Guard was a director of auxiliary. So in closing, this is my last time I get to address you as a body at a national meeting as NACO. It was an honor to lead you. I want to thank you for your belief in me. I want to thank you for your support. And I can tell you, it truly humbled me. Thank you for your kind attention, Semper Peratus.
Thank you, and good morning, I guess it's morning. We have, we had interesting tasks recently. What do you think? He was talking about an opportunity to take, and put it into a second challenge and pull together a team here.
And I give them all the credit. I'm just here to present. What we wanted to do was find an opportunity to allow anybody to look up any of our uniforms, and we have a number of them, to look them up on their phone, on their laptop, on their Kindle, on their desktop, and be able to either give presentations or to look at how to order the uniforms. And also, we wanted to make sure that all of the BSX policy letters were copied into it. So here we go. We have developed an interactive guide. Now, this is gonna be probably a little hard for you to see on the screen. But each one of those lines is a link, and you can click on those links, and you can go and take a look at any of the uniforms. And I told them I did not want them. So the first you saw was the entire, the entire listing, the entire index of the guide. When you want to get into a uniform, a specific uniform, you can click on a picture of a uniform. And in this case, it's the traps. You want to click on traps? You want to see more about it? All right, here we go. Now that there's links, you can click on shoes, covers, what's the uniform look like, where can I order it? All of the stuff that you need to know is right there. And you can get very specific with it. It's very easy to link. If we ever had an update, let's say we wanted to do And keep clicking. There we go. So, this is again, I'm going back to, this is what the index looks like, and these are all links, and you can click them, and you can follow it, and you can get into any of the uniforms or any of the sources. There's also QR codes that are built into this. I had a friendly reminder from Kelly. She said, you know, if you do anything, what I'd like you to do, or what our, my flotilla would like us to do is put QR codes on there. We had done that. It was easy enough to do because QR codes are, are today's way of using like an index. So, thank you, Kelly. So, here's an opportunity, too. We wanted to help with the insignia and all the awards, the stuff that goes on to the ODUs. We wanted to make sure that that was all covered as well. So everything, in case you're wondering, everything that had been in the old OXMAN, I say old, is here. Nothing was lost. But what we gained was information about, there's videos now, there's all kinds of stuff that helps, there's the videos that pop up. How do I roll my sleeves? How do I blouse my boot? There's all kinds of links now to Coast Guard-sponsored videos. This existed, but it was scattered, and it was hard to find. So now all of this is in one location. The location, there'll be a link, the location will be on the H Directorate, obviously. We'll put it on the National Directorate. It'll be a link that you can put on a district web. There's no reason that we can't. It's all going to be protected, so that changes are legit and approved by NACCOM. And then we can, again, tugging at, about it being a live document, we wanted to make sure that we could do those changes quickly. Now, I wanted a guide that was digital like this, but I also wanted a simple piece of paper that a new member you could be handed. A brand-new member says, what do I do about uniforms? Well, here, I have a trifold, double-sided, with all kinds of illustrations. You can hand this to a new member. And there's QR codes there. The QR codes are where do I buy it? How do I wear it? How do I get back into the interactive uniform guide? This is, I'm not going to inventory this, don't worry. And this will be for you to print if you want at the flotilla level, and you can hand this to a new member, and they're equipped. A hundred percent information, and no doubt where to find it. I have placed a hundred of them back there, under that camera, on the black podium, that you can grab and take a look at and play with. What I would ask you to do, that we have, we have literally worked on this for months, checking, working on cleaning it up, polishing it, getting it to this stage. What I expect is, we missed something. So if you see something, say something. I know that I'm borrowing a phrase, but if you see something that we missed, don't be afraid to let me know, because we can fix it. But this, the, the idea that this is now locked, live, ready to go, you'll see it posted tomorrow with your permission, NACO. Make it so. So, it's, it's interesting to go through this. We, we had to look at the scope and try to find the right talent, and I'm here to tell you, we do have, you should be very proud, we do have the talent to make this work. And again, I'm proud to have sponsored this, but I give all the credit to the team. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Very helpful. And those are in the back for you. Up next, we have Barry Ditten.
Here I am.
Okay, if we can get the video keyed up, that would be great. I get this one. Didn't Lee do great? Let's give Lee another round of applause, because that has been a labor of love. I'm telling you. It has been a great endeavor, and I don't know about you, but I'm excited to start using it. There we go. Since 1939, the Coast Guard Auxiliary has provided support for the Coast Guard and our nation. As our organization grew, so did our need to expand our reach. For years, focused being recreational boating safety, but from that mission, we have grown to include many more, including such things as augmentation and culinary service, dispatching chaplains across the globe, responding to major disasters, and giving support in emergency management crisis, utilizing our interpreters and translators on cutters and abroad, and supporting public affairs. I couldn't help but mention that. Now, it's like a party. These worthy missions and more are accompanied by a vast amount of proud traditions, which we have many, and decades of honored service by many who have come before us. But as we move into a new era, the Coast Guard Auxiliary move into a new exciting look. From our new slogan, which we announced, if you recall, this time last year before we had to quickly go home, Proud Traditions, Worthy Missions, suggested by Commodore Allen Fred and Luntley, a great environmental leadership. The new graphics and the support of the team, which is by Luntley, who wanted to be part of this next year. Again, Proud Traditions, Worthy Missions. Now, I ask you, as a college professor, I never want my students to do. Take your cellphones out for me. Smartphones. If you've got a flip phone, it's not going to work. So, there's a few. Every so often, I see the flip phone. But take your cellphone out, and I ask for you to go to our national main page. Just go to the national page and look at it. I hi, I had my people hijack, I am so sorry, technology. I had my people hijack, I know Amanda's like watching me. We hijacked the main page just to throw up some of the new graphics. We are looking to do an entire overhaul of the Coast Guard Auxiliary, to take us into a new, exciting era that will not only energize and excite our members, but also help us recruit more and more, because we need more people, and we need exciting people. This will not just include the update now. Okay, you quit playing on your phone. Look at me again. But it's not just graphics. We are looking to do an overhaul in many things. We're looking to update all of our brochures and trifolds. So if you, you have one of those, you utilize, we're going to update it with the new graphics. We're going to look to update the view of forms and manuals to include our graphics. We're looking to pre-create, and Rick Kraus is over here filming me, Reaper. We are looking to pre-create a whole bunch of social media posts. I know some of our flotillas and divisions and some of our districts kind of struggle with like, what do I post? We're going to have a whole bunch of pre-created stuff to really enhance, again, our new slogan and our new graphics. We're looking to update PowerPoint presentations. I will tell you, in the A Directorate, we get requests all the time. Do you have a PowerPoint so I can take it to a Rotary Club and say, hey, what is the auxiliary? We're looking to have stuff that like that, or Safe Boating Course flyers, that will be plug and play. You type in your information, and it looks uniform. We're going to do a lot. So I will tell you, and it's funny, because I didn't realize Kelly was a fan, but as, as you can tell, every so often, you hear a little bit of my Kentucky and every little bit of my Tennessee come out. But I grew up listening to old country music, and one of my favorites was Don Williams, also a fan of Kelly. And Don Williams had a song, and it was called "I Believe in You." And it said, "I believe in music, I believe in magic, and I believe in you." Well, I do believe in music, and I do believe in love and magic, but what I do is believe in the Coast Guard Auxiliary and you, because we need you. We need you to take this slogan and these new graphics and take them across the board. Let's get rid of the old and bring in the new. This is a major undertaking. It is going to reshape the way we look as an auxiliary, and it's very exciting. If you have any questions, feel free to find me. I will be lurking around like everybody else for the next few days. But I want to give a special thanks to NACO and V NACO, because without them, we would not be moving forward. I pitched this about a year and a half ago, and the Dean NACOs as well, BSX, because, you know, we can't do anything without your support. But the many members that, that have contributed this thus far, but especially the A Directorate, they have done an outstanding job. We hope to make a difference in the future, and we will make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Barry. Two of our many, many rock stars. Nash, I'm still having a problem with this Vice National Commodore thing. So, soon to be NACO, Kirkwood, will present the national recommendations very shortly. However, there is something I'd like to address prior to that. One of the five I've withdrawn. It was my recommendation regarding finance, to have that returned to be a Directorate and not a group. The logic behind it was, years ago, we were approached by Active Duty to develop a cadre of financial advisors to assist coast, active-duty Coast Guard members with blended retirement choices. But that need never actually came to fruition. So hence, I authored the recommendation. Last week, I was contacted in person by senior Coast Guard leaders, asking me to now provide that cadre of financial advisors, as well as financial instructors, to instruct active-duty personnel to guide other active-duty personnel. So based on that need, and of course, you know, my response was, yes, ma'am, I'll make it so. So now you know who asked me. I have withdrawn that recommendation. Almost, NACO. Kirkwood, would you present?
All right. All right. Thank you, everybody. So each member of the National Board received a copy of the recommendations on July 17th. I'm going to present an overview of each of the recommendations, and they will be discussed tomorrow, also in the national area planning meetings. Again, the financial recommendation has been pooled, so there are only four that we will discuss here today. The first recommendation for consideration and action was submitted by our National Commodore, for motto, on May 29th, 2024. It would require that all members who have enrolled from July 20th, 2022 to date, and ongoing, going forward, all new members also become members of the Auxiliary Association, formerly known as OXA. So the discussion in this, in 2022, a recommendation was passed by the National Board and approved by BSX in July of 2022, that made provisions for a second 5031C to be formed, and members of the Auxiliary be removed from OXA to gain a substantial reduction in insurance rates. However, it was determined that the substantial reduction could be achieved by changing insurance carriers instead of creating a second 503, 5013C, and removing members from the OXA. The second 501, 501C3 was not created, and members were not removed from OXA. This recommendation would have all members who enrolled from July 20th, 2022, and new members going forward, become members of the OX Association, formerly known as OXA. Is there any discussion on this? Yes, sir. Do we have microphones out in the, all right, we'll work on that.
Tony, you're loud enough, I'll hear.
Yeah, thank you, Commodore Thatch. That's a great question. And the question was, I'll have NACO answer this, but the question was, previously, all new members signed a form saying they also joined the Auxiliary Association. And what's the, what's the provisions for going forward? Commodore, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that, Commodore, and it's an excellent question. Thank you. What we inadvertently have done is created two classes of members. We have a class, one set of members that are members of also the Association, and one set that aren't. In my efforts of inclusion, in my efforts to be transparent, I had made a promise to the National Board, to the Commodores, that I would post the minutes of the Association meetings up on the national website, so that every member could see them as well. Problem is, we now have a number of people that aren't members of the Association. So if we bring everybody back into the Association, everybody gets to enjoy the transparency. Would it require that form? Yeah, my thinking is though, 2024 version, something digital, something, let's make it easy. The last thing I want to do is create something that's difficult or a heavy lift. But what this provides us is, we have one organization that supports, meaning the Association, that supports the entire Auxiliary. Right now, it supports most of the members. There have been some things that came forward that I couldn't disseminate, and I found it very frustrating. I joined a meeting with the National Board. I did two of them, one in March and one in May, and I expressed my frustration with that. And I'd like to, as my second hat as Chair of the Association, I'd like to share everything that transpires within that as well, because I truly believe in transparency. We all know that there were some things that happened in the past, and we've moved on from them. I, I handle things differently, we'll put it that way. I hope that answered your question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, NACO, and more to come. on the national website so that every member could see them as well. Problem is, we now have a number of people that aren't members of the Association. So if we bring everybody back into the Association, everybody gets to enjoy the transparency. Would it require that form? Yeah, my thinking is, though, 2024 version, something digital. Something, let's make it easy. The last thing I want to do is create something that's difficult or a heavy lift. But what this provides us is, we have one organization that supports, meaning the Association, that supports the entire Auxiliary. Right now, it supports most of the members. There have been some things that came forward that I couldn't disseminate, and I found it very frustrating. I joined a meeting with the National Board. I did two at a morning, March, and one in May, and I expressed my frustration with that. And I'd like to, as my second hat as Chair of the Association, I'd like to share everything that transpires within that as well, because I truly believe in transparency. We all know that there were some things that happened in the past, and we've moved on from them. I handle things differently, we'll put it that way. I hope that answered your question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Naco. And more to come, definitely, on this, once it has been approved on Saturday morning, I believe. We'll go forward with that and make it happen quickly. Okay? Any other discussion on this one? All right, thank you for that. Recommendation number two. This recommendation would amend the qualifications and mission codes for aids-to-navigator verifier AVPQS, aid-to-navigation technician ATNAT, and district prevention waterway DPW-trained minor aid technician, along with the mission codes for 3, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34, be approved for inclusion among the existing list of qualifications and hours within the Prevention Directorate for attaining the Marine Safety Training Ribbon and the MPRO PIN as detailed in Chapter 10, pages 10 through 45, 1045 through 47, and Chapter 11, pages 11, 12 through 14 in the OX manual. This was, this was penned from Kim Cole, Director of Prevention, via Dean Aco, Patrick Fair. So discussion on this, the three qualifications referenced above have resided within Prevention Directorate since its inception, but have not to date been included as applicable towards the earning of MST-R or the MPRO PIN. This has been the status quo, despite the fact that qualifications in the Navigation Systems Program require levels of training that parallel the rigor of those in the Marine Safety Program. In numerous areas within the Auxiliary, earning qualifications within the Prevention Directorate is extremely difficult because qualification wants and needs vary from sector to sector. Many capable members have expressed frustration with their inability to work towards desired qualifications in their respective sectors. Making the AVPQS, ATNAT, and the ATNTT qualifications applicable to the MST-R and MPRO PIN, and therefore expand members' prospects for earning these sought-after devices by providing multiple paths towards attainment. This will serve to increase the overall number of qualified members in the Auxiliary by encouraging participation, maximizing opportunities for accomplishment, and enhancing the morale of those who endeavor to work in direct support of these crucial Coast Guard missions. Is there any discussion on this? Yes, Commodore?
Hold on one second.
Microphones are coming.
That way they can hear us online.
Currently, the aids-to-navigation verifier qualifies under the operations ribbon or an additional star to that. Would we need to include verbiage in this recommendation to undo that if we are moving that qualification over to the Marine Safety Ribbon?
I don't know the answer to that. That's a great question. Anybody can? So what you're saying is, it would actually then qualify for two different?
If, if we don't address the current ability of the aids-to-navigation verifier qualifying either for the OP ribbon, if you don't have one, or a star to that ribbon, we would have it putting a star on two different ribbons with just this resolution, and not addressing the provisions in the OX manual for the aids-to-navigation verifier under the OPs ribbon.
All right, that's a great point. Perhaps we could take this offline? We could do an amendment Saturday morning with, if we need to, but that's a great, I hadn't thought about that, so that's a great one. Kim, maybe we can talk on that. Couple of us. All right? Any other discussion? All right. We will, we will work on that. Thank you. Recommendation number three, the third recommendation for consideration and action was submitted by National Commodore Gus Formato. This recommendation for the D Directorate Diversity and Inclusion be moved into the ForceCom Mission, a ForceCom Mission Support Group, to be led by a Director with the assistance from a Deputy Director, reporting to the Deputy National Commodore Mission Support through the Assistant National Commodore ForceCom. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. Hearing lunch, let's move on to the last recommendation. The fourth recommendation for consideration and action was also submitted by National Commodore Gus Formato on June 1st, 2024. This recommendation would reorganize the Information Technology and Planning Group by eliminating the ANACO PS Office, transferring the Student Programs Directorate to ForceCom, disbanding the Measurements Directorate, and adding an additional Deputy ANACO to ForceCom in Mission Support to maintain span and control after adding Diversity and Student Program Directories to ForceCom. In the discussion, the dissolution of Measurements Directorate will result in the majority of its functions being integrated into the U Directorate. The remaining functions would be reassigned to suitable Directories by the ANACO IT. With the disbanding of the M Directorate and the integration of the S Directorate into ForceCom, the ANACO PS role would become redundant and thus be resolved, effectively eliminating three ANACO positions. The reorganization will streamline, streamline the group. The new structure will maintain a D Naco IT PP and ANACO IT, and introduce a Deputy ANACO IT, a new position, all overseeing the U, C, and Y Directories. Is there any discussion on this one? Yes, Commodore? Wait for the mic, please. That way people on YouTube can hear us.
Thank you. Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
One of the concern in that, the reports provided by this Directorate, I go to often. It's one of my go-to resources, and my concern is, when I read the language, it appears we're going to disperse some of the, these very important and needed reports throughout another Directorate. The quality of these reports, over a period of time, have increased dramatically. And as a Commodore, looking at where I stand as a district, especially as large as D7, my concern is that we're going to dilute the value or the quality of the information. When I read this, it says, the remaining functions will be reassigned, will be reassigned to suitable Directors. I just, I'm trying to understand why we would disband something that has value to Commodores. And I don't know how many of the Commodores in this room utilize that. Could I see a show of hands who go to that Directorate and use that, that information?
I think it's our flotilla commanders as well. It's all the way through our organization, our leadership. It's valuable.
My concern is, we're fixing something that I don't think is broken. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commodore. I'm going to have Commodore Merriman discuss that.
Part of the background for it is that we, we have multiple groups providing information that's valuable to different levels of the organization. The source of that information is OXDATA II. The approach that we intend to take is to survey the users of the current performance measurement products to find out what they use, what they find valuable, what they don't use, and then make the appropriate reassignment of those reporting functions to the U Directorate. It will come directly from the source, OXDATA II. The formats will be whatever the end user finds valuable. The comment about other functions being assigned as appropriate refer to the products that the M Directorate produces that are not reports. So for example, the new member survey and the strategic plan tracking. Those will go to the right places. They won't go to the U Directorate, because they're not OXDATA II-based. Does that answer your question? You're welcome.
Nothing's going away, John.
I think we, I think we all count on those reports. I, they're invaluable, and I know they're invaluable. Some of them are.